This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
four at his home.
And because of that, I would ask us to take a moment of silence. We've had a very difficult week here. We have Don Red's funeral today. Stan Parent passed away today. Laronne Nelson used to work for us, has passed away recently. And Rainie Carrick, whose wife Tracy is a substitute aide for us, who works quite regularly, passed away, he passed away at 57 about two weeks ago. So, I would ask, we could just have a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Twelve meeting to order. Approval of the agenda, your motion? We'll note that there is a, I'm sorry, let me take a second first.
Second.
There is a new agenda at your place. There's only one minor change, but I wanted to make it official. And it's under the consent agenda with the extracurriculars, the DI coaches. We have one who is taking off, taken off the list and one added in her place. And that should be on that agenda at your place. So that's the only change in the agenda. So we'll post changes. It's been made in second. Connie and Kirsten is what I have.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment? As usual, sir, motion to accept the minutes for the September 8th, 2015 regular board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dave?
All right, donations. We have donations from Stevens Point Vet Service via Zoetis, is that it? $221 to the Wapaka FF8. Knights of Columbus donated $571.05 each to the special education department and to the Wapaka High School Live program. And Linwood Women's Club, which is a resurrected club commemorating the Linwood School, is donating $250 to the WLC library. So we'll need a motion.
What was that, the Linwood Women's Club?
Well, County A, is that what, County A, there was a Linwood School?
Okay.
So supporters of the, I think they disbanded for a while and they brought themselves back together again.
That's right.
I'll move with appreciation for the, all of the different donations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you notes.
Okay. No thank you notes, the recognition, this is National School Lunch Week, October 12th through 17th. And there's a declaration to that effect from the Department of Public Instruction, proclamation. So, in recognition of all the work that Dar and her staff do for us, thank you.
Good cookies today. As always.
I heard really good things about summer school, breakfast and lunch too. I think there were a lot of parents very appreciative of that. One last thing to think about, yeah.
Next slide is reports on meetings attended. We had four people attend the fall regional meeting. Sandy, I know you've prepared something?
Yes. It's not very extensive. Steve and I went early and went to the workshop that was titled "School Board Policy Implications of the 2015-17 State Budget." And had a 63-page PowerPoint package that you could print out on your own, or the 41-page edition that had three sheets. And I must say, I had several impressions about this. I was really glad I went. There was much that I wasn't up to date on. First impression is it feels quite overwhelming. There's just so much legislation, some of which seems, I kept an understanding of why it would be something that was slated, and others seem designed to deal with the situation in any particular school, which is interesting to me.
It ultimately affects all schools.
It ultimately affects all schools, even though it says at the beginning, this only applies, say, to the scene now, if it's something that could happen in the past. So I, as, it's probably not too surprising that the things that I can remember now that it's several weeks after tend to be the ones that are perhaps a little more hot-button issues or surprises. And so, one of them is that there's a new high school graduation test required, and it's a civics test that is going to ask the same 100 questions of high school students that are asked of people who are coming, immigrating to the United States. And it can be taken multiple times until you pass. You need to get 60 out of 100 correct. And this starts, what, in the 2016-17 school year?
For graduates in 2016-17.
Program. Yep. And at this point, there's not enough information to know whether this could be an open book test or a take-home test, but it will be something that will have to be done. So that is one area. Another area is that the open enrollment rules for special needs students and money following special needs students are changing. And school districts used to be able to turn down students if they could show that it was an undue financial burden. And starting in 2016-17, that won't be possible. There are still other reasons. A school district could legitimately and legally turn a student down if they don't have space and they don't, they aren't able to provide the services. But, and then the third one was that homeschool pupils now have the right to participate in interscholastic athletics and other extracurricular activities, and that's a change. And while they are supposed to, let's see if I can find this, this is... Okay. Upon request, the home-based educational program in which the pupil is enrolled shall provide the school board with a written statement that the pupil meets the school board's requirements for participation in interscholastic athletics based on age and academic and disciplinary records. No person may provide a false statement under this paragraph. The school board may not question the accuracy or the validity of the statement or request additional information. So the WIAA, which had not allowed for homeschool students to participate in athletic activities, have now implemented some emergency rules to allow this until they can amend the bylaws. Is that, you understand me as well?
Can I just ask a question? So if the school board can't look into the validity, who does?
No.
No?
No, it says in the law that parents have to be honest.
Yeah.
Once a student is involved and when there was some question about, say, they violate one of our, our rules related to participation, they get caught doing something they shouldn't have been doing. My understanding, we can enforce...
That aspect.
That aspect.
Okay. And also, I stopped here, one other question going back to the special needs, and I don't know if it was discussed, but the schools that accept vouchers, the voucher system through the state, are they also able to deny students with special needs?
Do you know, Pat, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
It might have been somewhere in here that that was talked about. And I'm happy to share, I have the PowerPoints as PDFs and there's lots of information in it. But I don't know the answer to that.
It's complicated, to say the least, but I will, I think what I know so far is that they, if we have a student open enrolled to a virtual school, is that what you're talking about, virtual or voucher?
Well, either one, you maybe know the, maybe, maybe the license.
If it's a virtual school, they can contract back with us to provide educational services. That's one way to do it. Voucher schools, I don't know, I can't answer that. I don't know that there is an answer to it. It's just very, extremely complicated.
Yeah, a question. I just had a question about the sports. If there's a student that's expelled from another district and they're homeschooled, can they participate in sports here? I mean, how do, are there regulations as far as...
I don't think there are regulations as far as it relates to open enrollment, but if someone's expelled from another district...
Yeah, but homeschooling, I'm not there. Oh, but for the sports part?
That would be one of the questions that they would have to answer, whether or not they had necessarily violated some, they're supposed to answer truthfully regarding violations of code.
And I think there is something that I'd have to look through the PowerPoint that talks about, sometimes students are homeschooled after they've been expelled. They can ask how they...
And that's what she's asking.
Yeah.
There are a lot of things that we can't answer, they will be decided through the courts. You can be sure that there'll be lawsuits involved. There will, it's bound to happen, and it will happen, and that's how those questions will get answered. Because currently, the student is not eligible due to not, not passing grades, so they have to sit out for the next basketball game. Parents could withdraw that student, homeschool that student, and say, now they're passing. So that's going to, going to happen in some particular cases. And the students who met the letter of the law aren't going to take that sitting down, I don't think, the parents aren't. So there will, many of these issues will be decided in court.
And one other of my impressions, and this was an early impression, is how much we rely on our district administrator to stay up to date on all of these things. And so we see things like the policies that we're being presented with today, that, talk about our graduation requirements or some of the other things, because who knows what's come down the pipe. And then my second thought is, why would anybody want that job? There is just so much, there is just so much. So the last thing, on the last page, or, no, not on the last page, just how to stay up to date and links to different websites where you can get information. Of course, the WASB is very energetic and pays a lot of attention to legislation.
It's a big part of what they do, and they, of course, offer those same PowerPoints and links to administrators. So it kind of consolidates things for us as well. Just another comment on the WIA thing, just so we know who's doing what. Legislature can't tell a WIA what to do, because WIA is an organization outside of public, public schools. We belong to the WIA. So what the legislature did was say, no school can belong to an organization that doesn't allow homeschool kids to participate. So the WIA changed their, they have an emergency rule in effect saying they can. Schools can allow homeschool students to participate in response to that. And then they'll have a meeting to change their bylaws to create an organization that allows homeschoolers to participate. So it's a roundabout way of getting, allowing that to happen.
And that biology unit will have to take it back in April, maybe?
April of next year.
Of 16th, yeah.
Well, and it's nice for some homeschool kids, I mean, I can see the advantage, you know, they don't necessarily need to participate now, but I just worry about the effects that could happen.
The other thing they talked about was the, the kids that are homeschool versus the ones that are in school, you have to keep a certain, your grade level, grade.
Grade point.
Grade point. And the homeschool people don't have that. And if, you know, if you're under that, you can't play football, or basketball, or whatever it is. And what happens to the homeschool person?
Right. They'll be able to play?
Yeah?
Anything else to add to that?
Connie and I were at the later part of the dinner and the presentation on engaging the community. And the speaker was very dynamic and did a great job of walking us through different exercises to help us thoughtfully see the areas that are strengths within a district and those areas where we could do some improvement in how to engage the community, how to engage the parents, how to engage the students, and so is a collaborative effort. And so the four of us that were there put our heads together and we thought we poured a pretty good shot. When they suggested, they gave different examples of ways that you could engage the community, and we're doing a lot of them already. So that was really good. That's not to say that there's, you know, always a group. It was a, it was an eye opener. It was a kind of little report card or checklist as to how we're doing and what we're doing then. It was, it was a nice evening.
My thunder was stolen all by our giveaways from Chiak.
We have an app that they've developed of their, for their school district, so you can immediately redeal. For you, maybe, but there are a lot of people... Yeah, that's pretty exciting.
I'm going to ask, Ben, didn't we talk about that, an app that we have?
I'm not aware of any of that app.
Okay.
Well, Chiak, that'd be interesting.
It's not a very big app.
So what, what do you find out? Does it take you to their website? An app that...
Just, I don't know, right on your desktop on your phone? Yeah, if you call it, yeah, I don't know if you talk so much, because I don't know what I'm talking about.
Because we have a mobile application of our, I mean, a mobile version of our website.
I'll look at it.
Yeah, that you can see on your phone.
But that's the same as if we went on the computer to your home, to the homepage, isn't it? Same information?
Same information.
It's just one step quicker. Just what it sounded like. Something about one and a half minutes.
We'll look into that. When? Tomorrow. Okay. Pat, you went to another conference.
Yes, I did. I went to a conference put on by Economics Wisconsin, the Wisconsin Council on Economic Education. And I talked to Dave just briefly about it after the fact. It was in Managua, two days. There were lots of interesting things. Unfortunately, most of what I learned doesn't apply too much to school boards. I was, I was a little disappointed with that. They advertised it for school district superintendents, board members, you know, community leaders, that sort of thing. And I thought, well, good, maybe I'll learn more about the economic impact of schools and so forth. And there was very little of that. So, interesting in that you learn a lot about, you know, how the Federal Reserve works and a lot of things that are interesting, but quite frankly, don't really apply too much to us on a, you know, day-to-day or month-to-month basis. So, not much more I can say about that. I did bring home a book they gave everybody. I'll turn it over to Rob, can take it to our econ, who is teaching our economics at the moment, Rob?
Priya Duda.
Priya Duda, okay. And she can maybe look at this, and I got some other information, might be helpful. Because really, the emphasis was on why it's important to have an economics classes for students. And we already have that, at the high school at least, and, and they basically talked about a lot of the reasons for that. A couple of things, just, and I think we already know that they, they did do, one of the seminars was on how education in general makes a person who, the more education, the more economic viable you are, and how much more wealth you can obtain in your lifetime. I don't think I need to tell anybody in this room now, we're all kind of proponents of that. But they had a lot of data and stats to point that out. You know, if you only graduate from high school, or don't graduate from high school, you know, this is kind of where you can expect your life to go, economically, wealth-wise, and then high school, college, beyond. So that was kind of interesting, you know, they had the data to show, but I think it was general information we would have all agreed about beforehand. And only one other thing, I told Dave, and I think we know this as well, but every now and then we get people in the community who wonder why we put a lot of our money and emphasis, at least at the high school, at the middle school too, in terms of our, what we used to call our shop classes, our industrial arts and so on, and the importance of those. They had a lot of data to show that schools that dropped those courses, or got rid of, if you will, some of those, many of those courses, have also had much higher dropout rates. And the graduation rates almost invariably will go down, which I thought was pretty interesting. And it basically, the reason for it, I guess we all see the common sense, again, numbers of students who are going to your school who want those programs, and once you get rid of them, they don't really care to continue on very, very much longer. So, whenever we hear that argument, and people say, well, why we spend all the money for our industrial arts classes when only, you know, smaller numbers use it, we might just remind them that our graduation rates will go down if we move away with those. So, that was kind of interesting.
Upcoming meetings and other activities, Thursday, October 29th is our budget hearing and special board meeting, that'll be at 5:45 PM in this room. Thursday and Friday, October 15-16 is the WSAA and WSB employment and school law seminar at the Line Energy Center in Madison. I'm going, Pat, you're registered for that one?
I'm going to that one.
Saturday, November 7th is the WSB Legislative Advocacy Conference, and I think Sandy Robinson and Steve Shamble are registered for that one. So if anyone else would like to attend either one of those, let me know. And then our regular board meeting will be next month, Tuesday, November 10th, beginning at 5:45 PM in this room. There are no committee meetings this month. Take us to school business.
Hi, Wendy. I went to high school to the live program and visited Mary Jo. On my way there, I saw this is in the Wiki, so we talked about some library stuff. Nothing really in particular, but she did encourage me to go to the middle school, to the...
Makerspace.
Makerspace. Don't really know a lot about that right now, but when I go to the middle school, I will report on that. A new program that a librarian there has developed for kids, so I'll report on that down the road. Yeah, I went to the live program, and Mary Jo was here talking about that, I know when it was, a few months ago. And that's especially interesting for me, because it kind of piggybacks with what I do as a social worker for the family care program in Wapaka County. Because her students, usually most, all of them eventually become our clients. So the fact that she's paving the way vocationally for these students is just great. And not only that, but she's working to find employment opportunities in this small community, which is huge. Because Wapaka County Industries has been working on that for years and has not had a ton of success. But as Mary Jo says, you know, like a lot of us, she's lived in this community forever, so she's kind of gotten in with some of these employers and just kind of starts chit-chatting about what she, you know, what her students' interests are and can kind of just figure things out. And some of the jobs, and she may have reported on some of these, I can't remember, but anyway, the students are continuing to take the morning coffee orders, which is, you know, that's a great skill to have. They've developed a new contract with the Wapaka Expo that they're going to clean over there, which I can imagine the parents are thrilled about, because I'm sure that they're, you know, they get tapped out. And so they have a pool of money that they can pay students $10 an hour to do cleaning a couple times a week. So that's huge. But they're involved with the rapid roll cart, I don't know the lunch cart that comes to town a couple days a week, I don't know if people are, I've seen it, I haven't ordered anything, apparently their food is really good. But her students will take orders from teachers and go pick them up, and for a dollar will deliver the orders. So, not only is it teaching, you know, a skill to the students, but it's also promoting another business in town, you know, and helping them out. The kids helped out, sold burgers during the rodeo for the Mano's Steak House, which I guess has been very supportive of Mary Jo. They're planning to help the Kiwanis this summer with their chicken barbecue, you know, again, doing probably some of the more menial tasks involved, but still skill building. And then they also want to start doing some volunteering, so they're going to volunteer at Iowa nursing home. So, that's just unbelievable, really, what she's come up with, and she just, I said, she's got all this energy and she's about my age, and I'm just like, oh, gosh. God bless you. Always thinking more and bigger. So, and the other thing that she mentioned and voiced appreciation to Dave and to Maureen is that Mary Jo's father recently died, and her students were able to attend the funeral as a learning experience, which she was very appreciative of that, and I think that, you know, doesn't make a lot of sense. So, yeah, it was very enjoyable.
Well, I'll go next. I, I visited sort of the other end of the students section. I was at the chain school the other day, I was on Monday, and the kindergarten, and got there about the same time that lunch was. So, kind of falling in line with the National School Lunch Week, I was interested in what the kids were having, and quite frankly, by talking to the staff there, most kids take hot lunches opposed to carry lunch. And I didn't hear anybody complain about it, they all looked like they're, they're eating just fine, and quite frankly, they looked pretty appetizing. So, it was great. One little funny story, but it wasn't really a story, but one youngster tripped and fell and his whole tray went over and made a large noise, a loud noise, and everybody jumped, you know, as you can imagine. And the two teachers there, they were the two Laurys, Lori Wolf and Lori Zulinski, who were kind of helping, were real good. And it didn't turn out to be too traumatic for anybody, but it did scare everybody, myself included, because it was banging, you know.
It's a small room with a lot of walls.
Yeah, that's right. And it was kind of, you know, kind of unfortunate. But actually, I just, I kind of wandered around and visited with the teachers. I was happy to, I stopped at Mary Kay Risto's secondary class, and happy to see that she had her students, and being an old language teacher, they were reading to each other. They were paired off and reading, you know, hardbound books to each other, and they were all pretty engaged in that. And she said they're actually quite successful, the kids like to do that. So it was, it was fun to see. And as I say, I just kind of wandered through, I talked to Karen Hatfield, the music teacher, and she had just finished up with a 4K group, and she talked about her upcoming Christmas program that they're already thinking about, sort of thing. So, it was really a delightful visit, and everybody seemed good. And my one comment that I made, that I thought about was, you know, when I was at the high school all the years, all the buildings we had, you know, we, we really are pretty dull at the high school when it comes to the looks of rooms. Oh, my gosh, you go into some of the kindergarten, first grade, second grade rooms, they're so bright and colorful, and things all over on the floor, the ceilings, and it's like, yeah, I really liked those. Most of the rooms we were in were dull as dirt when it comes to, you know, looks. And so, it was fun, it was fun.
That's up to the teacher to do that, isn't it? That's, that's up to the teacher to snazz it out.
Yeah, I know, I know, I probably could have been. But it's amazing what they find, put on the floor, the footsteps, I mean, it's just, I mean, carpeting, you know, it's neat, it's really, so it's great, great.
Well, I, I was supposed to visit 4K, so I went over to Tiny Treasures this afternoon and got off and did it with Molly Harris's class. She has her hands full. She has 20 students in her class and 15 of them are little boys. But they were so well behaved, and they were so good, and she's got an aide in there with her. And it was pictured... her, and it was picture day, so they were all spiffed up, and they were having snack in a different room today, because the cameras were all set up in their normal room where they have their snack. And so we just chatted for a bit, and I, you know, I told who I was, and I was from the school board, and my job was to make sure that they have what they need, and that they like school, and is there anything that we could do to make it better? And so little boys kept raising their hands, saying, "We need swings, and slides, and blocks, and fire trucks," and all these things, and I said, "Well, what about the little girls?" This little girl raising her hand said, "Rings, we need more rings in our dress up." Two teen boys, five girls. So, anyway, they were delightful, and then they went back to the room after the snack, and they're working on some Halloween things. So they sang a bat song for me that was so cute about a bat, I'm not a bat fan, but whatever, it was cute. But they did want me to ask you if you all know how bats fly? What are their wings for? You know, I... So I said I would ring that test band to some with their sonar, but they all told me that bats fly. Oh, oh, I see.
I'm surprised, surprised you didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, they said thank you, and they love their little 4K. Learning things. You know, I just want to say one more thing, after our conversation last month on your awesome board report sharing, about how the 5K teachers commented on how much more prepared the children are coming to 5K based on their 4K experience, I get it, because those little aides lined up, they wall, and they had counted off by number to make sure that they were all there, and just the skills that they were doing in four-year-old kindergarten was so reminiscent of what used to be the other 5Ks, so it's a great program, I should be really happy we got it. And Molly Harris is darling, you seem to be enjoying the class.
Who else?
I made a visit to the high school, had actually quite a number of things that I had the opportunity to observe, but before I get into that, as a bridge to you, your comment about endeavors to draw the community, and I would like to express my appreciation for the Chamber Commerce for attempting to get the community involved in homecoming this year. They had a tailgate Wednesday afternoon, and then they brought back the bonfire, even in South Park as opposed to out at Hoppin Field the way they used to, but not real strongly attended, but they're going to continue and see if it can grapple, and it was just nice to see the Chamber trying to get some of the community activity centered around homecoming. Speaking of homecoming, I did go to the Pepper Alley, and that was interesting, I had not been to one of those before, not as in the old days, and it was fairly well organized, and kids were very practiced, they had, and at the end, they had the dance team out on the floor in front of the stands where all the students were, and I don't think it was planned, all of a sudden there was kind of this flash mob thing where students were coming out of the stands, or on the bleachers, and joining the dance team on the floor and dancing, and I just, I don't think that was planned, was it?
It actually was.
Oh, it was planned?
There was a group of teachers who practiced that dance, and they went out and did their dance, and then they waved the dance team in to join them, and then they had hoped that the stands would spill out and join in.
I was about to leave, just as that was coming to a conclusion, I looked at Mr. Becker and said, "Good luck," because it was just a swarm of...
Well, luckily, we weren't gonna try and get him back, because that was, "See you later."
The one disappointment was, I was just about, I saw Coach Crantwood's going out to join the group, and I don't know what kind of a dancer he necessarily is, he's very talented in many sports, but I'm not sure about his dancing abilities. He just got into the line by some of the kids, and the song ended, so never did find out on that, but anyway, I visited the high school, I spent some time with Ms. Allen, with, well, first of all, I was listening to the magical practice, and before that, the concert player, and then I had some time with Ms. Allen with regard to the musical that's coming up. She said there seems to be quite a bit of excitement with regard to the Adam Samley, it's a little different than things that have been done in the past, but the students have received it very well, she indicated that they seem quite excited about, and her intention would be to potentially rotate between a more classical musical and something more, or newer, I guess is the term that I'll use, I'm not sure what the Adam Samley was on Broadway, that was probably ten years ago, but it's still relatively new compared to the South Pacific or something like that, so. Anyway, it was always a pleasure to hear them.
Want me to sing?
Pardon?
You want me to sing?
No, I don't. I then had a chance to go back to see a project that, well, I don't know if you'd call it a project car, they're working on, you mentioned industrial arts, working on restoring, rebuilding a 1967 Camaro RS, that right now you could not consider it a project car, it's just a mere shell of anything, but they've got the motor sitting over on one side, or the engine, and they've started to sand away to find out what issues there are with the frame, the floorboards are all epoxy, and it's, it'll be interesting to see what they can come out with, but it's a project that at times is tedious, and some of the students may not be overly enjoying some of the activity on it, but there are others that it's really gonna draw them into some other aspects that could really be of interest to them with vehicles, it's obviously being a 67 Camaro, it's a manual transmission, some kids, I suppose, have not even ever seen one of those, so it's a work in progress, I'm not sure how long it'll take, but also along those lines, if you haven't been out there, I wasn't able to go inside, because they normally work on the project house first and second periods, but, and I didn't get there till about the fourth period, but they're coming along very well with that, almost all the siding is done, they're about ready to start the electrical, unfortunately, they run into a situation where the electrician from last year is not going to be able to be assisting them, although I was giving them some master plans so they can start cutting holes for the electrical boxes and things like that, but they're making really good progress with that. Then I went in for a little bit to a math workshop, it was, Mr. Phil was holding it, and he was helping a student, but the primary thrust of it is students helping each other, and as far as I could see, good cooperation, whether or not it was because a guest walked in, or whatever the case may be, but I was interested in observing what I don't understand, and the things they're doing in those math classes now are something that I have certainly forgotten since my time there. Overall, a very good visit, the facility is looking to be in great shape and holding up well, and it was just a pleasure to spend some time there. I did go into the computer class, but when I saw that my son wasn't there, I turned around because it won't necessarily cause a disruption there.
What happens to the Camaro when it's done?
I'm not sure.
Well, it's a...
What happens to the Camaro when it's totally restored?
In return, it's a little worse.
Tim purchased the vehicle, and through some, is he leasing it to us, or it's...
The title isn't his name.
Title's in his name, but he's giving the vehicle to the school to use as a project, and when it's finished, it will go back to Tim.
Oh, okay.
So he put the money up front for us to get it, gave it to us, and then we'll get it back once it's completed.
And he's paying for all the parts, and he's paying for any, like the painting itself, we won't do the finished paint job, so he'll pay for that, so. He's taking some risk in having us work on the car, but in return, he gets the car back, so.
So win-win.
I forgot to mention one thing, Dave, I also got to be a judge for homecoming. So I got to be a judge for the skits, and then the hall decorations and the float, the floats on Friday, and the kids did a great job, and I was really impressed with it. I'm impressed with their ability to edit and create those incredible videos, so they did a really good job. And also, the foreign exchange students did a really nice job this year of introducing themselves, and they are certainly to, certainly grateful for what, the opportunity to come to homecoming, so it was a really fun thing, I'm always honored to be able to do that.
If I could just mention one thing, you made me think of it, I attended the middle school soccer game, and I think, I don't know if anybody else here has seen the middle school teams, it's our first year, we have middle school soccer, boys and girls play on the same team, and they were playing a team from Wausau, I don't remember who they were, but it was fun to watch, a lot of parents were there, they have thirty students participating, and I'd been told the season's over now, and they won all their games. And that's a bit of an anomaly, because their league that they're in is kind of like A and B teams, and because Wapaka's in for the first year, they put them in the B league, because they didn't know how good they may be, and it turns out we were probably much better than most, well, certainly better scoring-wise than all the other games, and won a lot of them pretty handily. The good thing with that was, because they won so many games handily, everybody played a lot, which is sort of the idea anyway, and so they had a great year, from what I understand, and I assume it'll be something we'll be hearing more about in the future, so, but it was great to see so many people.
In case you're wondering why you haven't heard about our Wapaka Middle School soccer program.
Yes, Dave.
Just to clarify, it is not a school program, this is a recreational program that uses our middle school kids, or works with our middle school kids.
Works with...
We do not pay transportation to Wausau and those other places, kids get an excuse absence from school from their parents in order to leave to go to those meets. They did approach us to ask us to create a school team a year ago, and we were just reluctant to do that with all the other activities we have going, until it sorts itself out, we decide which kids are going to play soccer, which are gonna play some of the other activities that we're offering. So that's why you haven't heard of it, because it is not a school program. So they're...
So they are.
But they are using our buses, but they're paying for our buses, paying for the transportation, so it's working out as we expected it to.
Yeah.
Can we move on then?
All right. Under policy code, you heard about the first two of them, the first one is graduation requirements, and that simply says that anyone graduating the school year sixteen, seventeen, has to pass the civics exam sixty percent or better, and there are some qualifications in there, some requirements for special ed students, they have to take the test, but they don't have to pass the test, others can take as many times as necessary in order for them to pass. So we added that to our graduation requirements. The public school open enrollment procedures, alternative open enrollment, we continues through this school year, we can continue to deny applicants due to undue financial hardship, but once this school year is over, we'll no longer be able to do that. In our experience, we've only had one that we did deny based on undue financial hardships, it was appealed, I went to DPI, and we had a kind of a settlement or a meeting of the minds to make it a more financially liable for, or viable for both parties. So we've only used that clause once, and I don't anticipate using it again, it will expire by the end of this year. We don't understand what's being put in place of that, who's going to pick up those costs, and to give you an idea, the one that was going out, because of transportation and a special ed student, we were, it was going to cost the district approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to educate this child. We could've done it in district for about thirty thousand dollars, so we said, "That's undue financial hardship." It was appealed, and we had a chance of losing that, so we came to an agreement on transportation, who would transport, things like that. If that happens again next year, let's say with a different student in a similar situation, that's, we could not say no due to financial hardship, they would have to be allowed, but it's not clear who's gonna pay for that. They talk about the aides, the twelve thousand dollars is the dollar amount that's being transferred, but that's twelve thousand of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, who's picking up the rest, is it the receiving district, who's now the resident district, or is it us, and we just can't say no? You were gonna hear more on that at a conference, Carl, we don't know yet, I think it's still being worked out, but you saw an editorial in the newspaper from Senator Luther Olson touting this and saying it's a good deal, so we're hoping it is. It can't be as obviously bad as it sounds, but then again, we don't know. So that's the change in that policy, the transportation non-public school students, you recall last year, we entered an agreement to transport the St. Peters in Waiwiga, and we now create a policy that simply says we will follow the law in what we're expected to do for transportation of non-public school students, and it's in reference to that particular situation, we just have a policy to cover that. Agenda format is the last one, and I took a look at our agenda, as Steve and I put them together every month, and sometimes it's difficult to decide where we place that, what happened there. There we go. So I looked at our agendas over the last couple of years, and came up with what appears to be a reasonable, or something that covers all of the potential categories that we might have on a monthly meeting, that continues to begin with the president's comments, pledge of allegiance, call order roll call, approval of agenda, public comment, approval of minutes, and then communications. Under communications, we tend to have donations, thank you notes, recognition, and something else that might come up under that. Under school board, we have reports on meetings attended, which we did tonight, upcoming meetings, the future dates, that's that part, any reports on committee meetings that were held during the month. Instructional should be taken out, I don't know how that, that should've been deleted. School visits would be the last one, instructional is a whole other, our former policy had all of the committees spelled out, so that would just come under committee meetings, so instructional should come out, school visits then, and then under the administrator portion, you saw what we did tonight, it's changes in the policy, or the third Friday in September enrollment count that's coming up, would be reported under that, board monitoring, our consent and adjournment. So it's more consistent with what we've been doing, and really just trying to create a policy that reflects our practice, and it can be changed if it doesn't work for us, but I realize that we had very, changed from what our policy was over time, and wanted to just collect it back together again.
As we say, for all policy codes.
You need a motion? One motion to cover all policies would be approval of all four.
Okay, so are we gonna make, with the, with the change?
With that correction on the instructional.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That takes us third Friday in September count. You know, as I said to you in my notes, it's the kindergarten class, this year's kindergarten class, that is the lowest class we've ever had, a hundred and twenty-eight students. When we bring in a hundred and twenty-eight and lose two, or a hundred and seventy-one, a hundred and seventy-five we had last year, that creates a big drop in enrollment just because of rolling people forward. As you can see, our 4K is up this year from what it was last year at one forty-two versus one twenty-eight. And it's interesting that the one twenty-eight from last year is our kindergarten class, so it's like we captured all of the 4K kids, the same number of 4K kids came in, so there weren't too many sitting on sidelines.
Or losing, as it appears.
Yeah, we probably captured some of the lost, some others, but in net, that was zero. You can look at our high school, we've got six hundred and forty-eight students in our high school, when we used to have over eight hundred and fifty, I think eight, seventy-something was the top at one time. So as I'm telling the... So, as I'm telling the administrators, that's one class of students that we've lost. We used to sit in, or look, Pat, you'll remember, the day when the seniors are gone, at the end of the year. This was like a ghost town there because there were only three classes there. Now, that's the way it is every day. So, just wanted to share that with you. That's the third Friday in September count. We'll have a second Friday in January count. But that's another reason you'll hear in our budget that our three-year rolling average is decreasing and that affects our state aids. This is the first, oh, we'll talk more about the 4K and impact of 4K on the budget as part of the budget presentation. So, no action necessary on that. Are any questions? Okay. Board monitoring. Carl, you've got five minutes.
They're taking all of them.
Yes, let's do that. As you know, we tried to give you the budget pretty much in detail now so that when we get to the budget hearing on 29, that's more of a summary report because now's where, now's the time that we'd like to hear comments or... So we can prepare for that budget hearing on 29.
You don't think there's Carl?
Jack, you got your document? Yeah. You should all have one at your table. What are you going to write?
Do you have any changes from what's outlined in this?
I don't think so, Carl. Are there?
No.
No. Should be the same.
Do you have one for me too, Steve? Is that why you have that tie on? Matches?
That was it, yes.
Yeah.
I can blend in.
Yeah.
Camouflage.
Thank you. I want my turn next. Carl, you've only got three minutes now.
I was kidding about five minutes before. I know it's longer than that.
Well, to begin with, once again, I really consider it a privilege to work in the board of education for the district. I thank you for that. It's an opportunity we've had, have had for five years. And tonight I'd like to tell a story. I'd like to tell, Anita Miller said it takes a thousand voices to tell a single story. The school site, see all those stories within the school. The Department of Revenue is part of the story. Department of Public Instruction, administration, the staff, all the community members are part of this story. I'm just basically the messenger. And one of the stories that I've told over time, past three years, I've told that the power of connectedness, we're all interrelated. And I've proved that with a mathematical formula. I've also, the year thereafter, talked about balance, part of that story. And the year thereafter, last year, I talked about relativity. So, with that story, we know that everything we do matters. Everything is connected. Everything causes change. Everything is linked together. So when we tell this story tonight, Shakespeare said, "There's no legacy so rich as honesty." We're going to try to be honest with our story. We're going to tell the story so other people don't tell the story for us. So the proposed budget is based upon these Shakespeare's words. We know that children learn from what they see. We need to set an example of truth in action. And I believe tonight, that will be our story. So we know the purpose of the annual budget is to achieve educational objectives that will impact the future. This year, the annual budget, which is a financial plan based upon these budget priorities set throughout the year, we are going to bring together budget adjustments that are made for the final certification and generate. That will be made October 29. The property tax levy to support this budget is submitted for consideration then. The proposed one is tonight, the secondary one will be October 29. What are some priorities? Some of the priorities we've talked about is balancing all the needs of all the stakeholders, students, staff, and community members to continue to deliver the best education possible. We also want to continue to assess health insurance costs in conjunction with Health Insurance Committee to reduce costs. We know that over the past five years, since I've been here, health insurance has been reduced 28%. We also know that the industry standard has gone up about 30%, which is a 58% swing. Health insurance is the second major portion of our budget. Seventy-eight percent of our budget is salary and fringe. So that's a huge, big ticket item. We also, we talked about it this evening, Dr. Peschler, that implement policy procedures that which are fiscal responsibility as well as being coherent with the laws. We're continuing to align food service requirements by offering nutritious, quality meals to ensure those qualifying for free and reduced meals are provided with them. Again, Pat talked about this with the summer school program. We're adding to that factor. Providing continuous environmental safety compliance in conjunction with the district's school and safety consultant, keeping the district with the latest safety requirements. We have the bloodborne pathogen each year, annual training. We have lockout-tagout. We have hazardous communication, a multitude of training annually to keep this district So, we continue the exploration of energy conservation methodologies. The next slide, the next sentence shows that we prioritize our budget in the long-term interest of the school district. We continue to maintain all our buildings and grounds. We've had a budget meeting a while back showing our 15-year maintenance plan to show that what are our maintenance needs going forward so we can budget for that. That's long-term best interest for the district. And one of the things we've done this year at the Wapaka Learning Center, we have put on a new chiller unit. That corresponds with conservation methodologies, which will save energy efficiency in the long run. We've also, at the high school, you talked about the cleaning of our buildings. Our buildings are now served by building services contract, which all second shift employees are now contracted services. This, they provide us with training, they provide us with staffing replacement, they provide us with chemical replacement, and we don't have to pay the health insurance costs along with that. So they provide a great service to the district. We're also, at the middle school, you know, with the infrastructure, we've put a whole new gym floor. We finished that whole gym floor, which is a major, big-ticket capital project. In the chain of lakes, a new roof replacement for the one core roof component this year and the parking lot renovation as far as resealing. So we're addressing annual transportation replacement needs to ensure children's safety. Each year, we're buying two new buses, $175,000. Our buses can take a lot of wear and tear. So that's keeping our infrastructure, part of our capital projects, up to date. We continue to provide the necessary training to teachers, to sports services. You've heard a multitude of meetings from Rhonda with this regarding smarter balance assessments, effective learning, and those types of things. So it's a big process of everybody working together. We continue evaluation of enrollment trends to develop long-range budget plans for the school district. So what are potential roadblocks? We know that laws could change and it could be altered. And we know that potentially our categorical aid could be reduced and revenue limits could be changed, which doesn't affect our district so much because we don't literally tax to the maximum. Changes in laws and regulations of state and federal government may render some budget assumptions inaccurate or incomplete. So those are some roadblocks. What are the assumptions this year for this fiscal, this 2015-16 budget? Well, the district enrollment is estimated to decline by 53 students from last year using the revenue limit, third Friday count methodology calculation, which includes summer school, which includes 4K, which includes regular education. It is assumed the district will accept 96 students under the open enrollment tuition waiver law this year and that 106 students will leave the district under the open enrollment law. So you can see that used to work in opposite direction, but it's going, now it's not neutralized anymore, it's going more exiting than incoming. But it's still pretty close. The district will again have the community-based four-year-old kindergarten program, and we know that health insurance costs will again decrease this year by 1% approximately. So what have we done throughout, being a transient society? What do we do? We've reduced some positions, support staff half-time. And here's the transient board, replaced positions due to retirement and resignations, 11 teachers and 15.8 support staff, an ongoing process each year as people move. Added positions, one and a half teachers and 1.8 support staff. So where does the money come? We know that school finance regulations specify the amount of dollars the district is permitted to raise for property taxes and general state aid. This amount is a revenue limit. So the school district will pack up, receives 95% of its revenue from these two sources. You can see that. If you take other sources, federal sources, inter-district payments, that only accumulates in intermediate sources, 5%. Property taxes is 55% of this budget, while state sources is 40% of this budget. That has gone down each year because general state aid has gone down each year. So it shifts the burden to the property taxpayers. So where is the money spent? Two different perspectives, expenditures by function, which is the purpose for which the expenditure is made, expenditures by object, which is the type of goods and services purchased. So the division expenditures by function shows 58% is for instruction, people and staff support, which is really interrelated, which is really linked to instruction. It's for libraries, psychologists, counselors, nurses, therapists, transportation, co-curricular, maintenance, so all those other activities, 39%. And then there's that open enrollment figure, it's 3% of our budget, right, expense. If we look at the expenditure by function, you can see the simplistic pie chart for that. The division expenditures by object, wages and benefits, are 78% of this budget. That's really, really actually lower than the industry standard in schools. That's usually around 82%. So the district is lower than basically the 424 school districts average, 22% non-salary. Again, the simplistic pie chart. So what, the Wapaka school district property tax and mill rate to support this budget is estimated at $16,215,366. So if we take a mill rate analysis of the last few years for $1,000 of property valuation, you can see that it has risen. Now, a lot of school districts want to promote that their mill rate is lower than somebody else's and they use it as a comparison. But in the real picture, districts have a trouble controlling their mill rate because the mill rate is based upon property valuation. That's where everything's linked, everything matters, is that is controlled by the Department of Revenue. It is not controlled by the school district. If the school district had a big new company come into the district and a lot of building projects and a lot of more people move into the district, that mill rate, that property valuation, if that property valuation went up, this mill rate would go down. So that's how the mill rate is really determined. So it's projected at 1164. You compare that for $100,000 home compared to last year's mill rate of $11.16, you'll see that that's an annual increase of $48. So, the property valuation tax impacted at home values 100,000, 150, 200, 250,000, you can see that would increase by that $48 ratio or, or, as in the case of $250,000 home, it's $120, it's $120 annual impact. So this is the mill rate pattern again for the school district, projected at 1164 this year. So if we look at surrounding school district mill rate comparisons, Clintonville, Iowa, Manawha, New London, Wapaka, Wauwega, and Wauwros, you can see that Clintonville and Wapaka now are inching up to have a higher mill rate. Basically, the property valuation of both these school districts and the general aid in both these school districts is rolling opposite direction. And one thing I wanted to note on that, out of all these school districts, all of these other school districts taxed to the maximum, taxed to the allowable revenue cap. Wapaka does not. This is a harder, hard to read than I anticipated, but basically this shows Funtan, the Funtan tax, the debt service tax, and this year we have a property charge-back tax, which is unpaid taxes from the prior year were approximately $4,000. When that's unpaid, the district has to pay it. So consequently, the district then has the opportunity to put that in the tax rules, spread that out for the next year. This chart would be more helpful. This shows how the tax dollars collected over the years goes up. General aid has gone down. Property valuation has remained somewhat flat now. And you can see that this is the increase, the tax dollars. This is the property valuation history. If you look at 2009, 2010, it's 1.5 billion, 1.5 billion. Now, it's 1.4 billion basically. That's billion. Our Funtan budget is roughly $23,000. 1.5 billion, 1.4 billion shifts that whole revenue limit cap more than 22, 22 million, 23 million to do. The general aid loss trend for this district, you can see it's 854,000, 787,000, a million, 749,000, pretty much netted in 2013, '14. But again, last year, 356,000. Again, we're projecting another 356,000. So as we continue to lose general state aid, the only way on the revenue cap formula that 95% of revenue is you can make it up, is property taxes. Well, let's look at how we made it up. So over this seven-year period, I think it's a seven-year period, four points, the district has lost 4.1 million in general state aid. I told you we have roughly a $23 million budget. Losing $4 million over that period of time is substantial. How did we make up for that in our Funtan taxes? Well, we didn't. We literally tried to maintain as best we could, but we taxed increased to net that, you would have to go 4.1 million. Instead, we're roughly at 3.5 million, $611,000 less than our loss. So we only take what we need. Then, to double that down, the district doesn't tax the maximum. The district taxed 956,000 under the revenue cap, 1.5 underneath the revenue cap, 2.7 million underneath the revenue cap. If we taxed all this, that would be a substantial tax burden upon the citizens. So, is it 2.2, 2.7, 2.0? This year, we're projecting taxing underneath the allowable revenue cap of 1.8. It's 1.794. Now, that's, although it's perhaps a hard concept to understand perhaps for some citizens, but if you look at all the school districts in the state of Wisconsin, this is last year, prior to last year, who will tax at least $1 million underneath the allowable revenue cap. There are only 10. And Wapaka's about number six. And included in this number is Madison Metropolitan. They have a $313 million budget. So if they tax a million dollars underneath the allowable revenue cap, that's about 1.3%, 1.36%. When we tax at least a million underneath the cap, or 2 million underneath the cap, it's like 8%. So it's substantial. This is something districts aren't doing. This is something districts aren't doing. They're taxing to the maximum, they're trying to exceed the revenue cap through referendums, they're using energy efficiency components, which is allowable to exceed the revenue cap to make their infrastructure component changes, which we've done with our new chiller units, with our parking lot restructure, with our safety, there were safety initiatives that you could exceed the revenue gap. We've done it while taxing underneath the allowable revenue cap. So that's our story, that's one of our stories. We've also, when we refinanced our two thousand and five bond, you can see that the board-approved mitigation plan, you can see that our debt literally runs out in two thousand and nineteen. And you can see that in two thousand sixteen here, if we would have continued not refinancing it, we would have paid ninety-nine thousand dollars more, roughly we're saving a hundred thousand dollars annually because we refinanced our bond. Soon, we'll be bringing the two thousand and six bond to the Board of Education to refinance that. It's our last call of debt and we're going to try to do that in the very future here. But you can see that's a hundred thousand dollars less for the taxpayers by making that decision. This is the tax mitigation, original tax mitigation plan by the Board of Education, just to prove that I wasn't just making the numbers up. And the tax levy, basically disclaimer, now, we know are pretty much our third Friday count. We haven't received our general state aid, we'll receive that this, our certification of that this week, so we'll know what that number is. Hopefully, it's better. Hopefully, it's not eight-point-two million, but we don't know. That's was the rate, that was estimates they given us and that's the estimates we're using. So these factors include actual enrollment and actual property valuation determined in September. We know our property valuation is coming slightly better, but quite frankly, it won't move that pendulum very much. So the current educational comparisons are something we, these are things we can control. And if we compare these to the surrounding school districts, there are, basically, these are the most reliable comparison methodologies, methods. And there's the current educational cost, which is the overall education instructional cost per student. And then there's the total educational cost, which is the current educational cost plus transportation and facility cost per member. So if you look at the surrounding school districts, those ones, the districts I showed you earlier, the surrounding school districts, you can see that Wapaka per member is nine-thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-six, surrounding school districts, ten-thousand-two-ninety-nine, state average, ten-six-eight-nine. But then if you add facility cost to that, basically, everybody's roughly the same. We're average to the state, we're average to the surrounding school districts, and we're basically average with everyone else. We're not above average, we're not below average, but why is that? Why are we not below average in that? Or why aren't we? Well, one of the things we've done is we've put money back into our infrastructure and our safety components. We buy our buses each year, transport to, that's a capital project, that's transportation. We put two-hundred, two-hundred-to-three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in facility for our parking renovation for safety measures. We put in components for our security measures, you all approved. That's part of that equation, why our facility costs have gone up to maintain safety and for the students. Here's the surrounding school districts. And now, let's compare that to CISA five. CISA five, there's roughly, I think there's thirty-four school districts in CISA. You can see again, instructional cost lower than CISA, ten-thousand-six-hundred, state average, ten-thousand-six-eight-nine, Wapaka, nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six. Again, you do the comparison, same, basically, average with state, average with CISA, and average for total educational cost. And those are the districts that are being compared to. So Melody Beatty said, "Not knowing has taught you to know more than you could ever imagine." So we talk about enrollment. So you can see this enrollment going, losing students. Dr. Pesci talked about that. All districts are facing, a majority of school districts are facing declining enrollment. I can think of a few superior, where they have major industry and some in perhaps the Fox Valley, but they're not dramatically increasing across support. But this is the enrollment trend for the school district of Wapaka. And if you take just future enrollment projections that I'm doing here and just move, kind of basically cast everybody forward, which I did last year, but quite frankly, being honest with you, it didn't work out. But because of transient, unknown society, people move, it's, it's a complicated process. But you can see that if we take everything going forward, we have an average of four, average of kindergarten, we moved the 4K into kindergarten, we moved this forward, well, next year should be about, perhaps about a seven student increase, but then thereafter, if everything stays the same, which nothing stays the same, everything changes. So I'm going to give you this and put a huge disclaimer on this. This is just Carl's worst-case estimate for our future enrollment projections. This is the revenue limit calculation. This is what controls the ninety-five percent of what we're allowed with our ninety percent of attaining our revenue. As you can see, we have two, three-year rolling averages. Here's where that two-one-oh-two number comes into play, that's this year. And one of the things you'll see on here is declining enrollment exemption. Well, if we were taxing to the maximum, the Department of Public Instruction would try to hold us harmless, that's the term they use. And they would say, "You can have another three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand dollars added on to your revenue cap scenario and you can have another three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand because we're going to, we're not going to penalize you big time for losing students." But we don't tax to the maximum. So we don't, even, that doesn't come into play for us. A lot of districts are taking that as, as they tax to the maximum, are using that to supplement their budget for declining enrollment. Here's our property valuation estimate. Over here is our general state aid. And here is our Funtan tax, twelve million, eight-five-five-five-eight-eight. Here's our debt service, as I've shown to you. Here's our property charge-back at four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-three. And as you move that forward, it gets to approximately eleven dollars and sixty-four cent mill rate for one thousand dollars of property valuation. What this the form says, it says you have under levy by one-point-seven-nine-four-six-eight-eight. So this budget proposes taxing underneath the maximum by one-point-seven million dollars. So if you look at those taxes, that's how they show fund revenue, the twelve, eight-five-five-five-eight-six. This is where our general aid equalization shows up, eight-point-two million. And here's where, basically, this year we have, we're fortunate to have startup grant money, it's one-time money, under ninety-two thousand dollars per pupil. And moving forward, you can see the total revenue we're projecting is twenty-three million, six-nine-one-two-oh-seven. Now, if you compare that to our expenditures broken out by category, you can see that salary and fringe, that's the seventy-eight percent of our budget, is up here. And then, the remaining part of our budget, as you can see, for non-salaried expenses is elementary, two-hundred thousand, basically, middle school, one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, high school, two-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand, maintenance and operations, seven-thirty. And as we move, we've made an emphasis on putting money back into technology, four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars. So as we move forward through all these expenditures, you can see that this expenditure is twenty-three million, seven-seven-one-two-five-nine. Well, that expenditure is actually more than our revenues. That, that's not wise, is it? Well, consequently, what we've tried to always do here is take only what we need. Last year's budget came in with a eighty-five thousand dollar more revenues than expenditures. And one of the things, that budget incidentally, was within point oh-oh-three percent of what was projected. So consequently, since we have eighty-five thousand dollars more this year, we will budget eighty thousand dollars, that's how we worked out calculations, and then we're going penny for penny, less this year. This is the overall budget summary, and you can see that, again, Funtan salary, fringe, and then the elementary, middle school, senior high, district-wide, and then operating transfer. Operating transfer is Fund Twenty-Seventh, special education. Special education has to be, end up at zero at the end of the year, revenues and expenditures. So that means Funtan has to supplement that by one-point-nine million dollars. So here's the revenues, twenty-three-six-nine-one-two-oh-seven. Here's the expenses, twenty-three-seven-seven-one-two-five-nine. Fund Twenty-One is donation funds. People donate to us for teachers, for different activities and clubs, goes in, goes out. It's really, truly not an expense for the district because it nets itself. There's special education, special education is a three-point-four million dollar budget. Debt service, three-point-three, and the capital projects, which are support things such as a common car, a house at, that's being built at the high school, those such things are, that's where it's not, that money's basically in and out. And then food service. Food service is a one-point-one million dollar operation. Food service, as you look at food service and you look at transportation, they're huge budgets, but they provide, basically, the support to the district. Their one-point-two million is basically the transportation budget. And if you look at transportation, one-point-two million dollar budget, the state, what do they give us for that? They give us eighty thousand dollars in revenue for our budget to transport students. We talk about all the regulations coming down, consequently, eighty thousand dollars wouldn't pay, literally, for one of those, a special education student. So that's the revenue we get for that. So if you look at all these funds, it's thirty-one million, seven-six-four-seven-five-three. This is the legal required budget adoption format. I talked about where we came in. We came in for general fund, for our fund balance, we came in eighty, when all of a sudden done, eight-point-five-oh-four-four-three-seven. That's our fund balance right now, but it fluctuates, remember, that's in and out, that's a snapshot in time. We use that for short, so we don't have to short-term borrow. So we can, we have designated fund balance, I'll talk a little bit about that in a near future. And then this year, we're projecting that fund balance will go down by eighty thousand dollars, eight-point-four-two-four. If you look at where our revenues come in, our revenues, this is, I talked about where they come in from state sources or they come in from federal sources or local sources. The local sources, of course, that has increased over the years, that's mostly the tax money. And then, other, other areas. And as you look at the state sources, it's also basically gone down two-hundred-some-thousand dollars. But that's adding a multitude of players in there, it's adding Sage, it's adding government through local sources, so it's adding more than that. The federal sources roughly has stayed the same, and if we get all seven down, it's twenty-three million, six-nine-one-two-oh-seven. Expenditures, talked about that, but this breaks it down a little more detail, shows you where our instructional cost is, eleven million, seven-six-seven-four-five-eight for instruction. Support staff, nine-point-four million, which I told you that was part, fifty-eight percent instruction, this part, basically, the support which supports instruction. So consequently, they're basically all deemed toward education. And then, our operating transfer, special education, and our open enrollment cost, twenty-three million, seven-seven-one-two-five-nine, again. You take your special education and Fund Twenty-One, they like us to do together, that's three-point-four million dollar operation. Debt service this year, as we're moving forward, you can see that we're three-point-three-five-five-four-nine-five this year. That's what we need to pay our debt service. Capital projects, that we're not taxing for any capital projects. We have capital projects money for items that we will need in the future. If we need to make a capital project improvement, we can do so. And we can fund those housing projects for the high school as we move forward too. And food service, I talked about the one-point-one million dollar operation. We don't tax, again, districts can tax for this, which we don't do. They tax for the community service fund. That's outside the revenue limit, that raises individuals' taxes. So we don't do that. We don't have community service fund, we do them within house. And we don't have a package cooperative fund. So this is the same, this is published, this will be published in a Thursday paper legally, it has to be published two weeks prior to the October twenty-ninth budget hearing. It's the same format as I showed you, it's just a summary of the documents, put it up there so you can have that. And it's only just, difference is it shows the increase in basically budgeted expenses from the prior year. And it shows that expenses overall, remember, it includes all the funds here, only, expenses are only going up two-point-two percent. Because of that loss in general state aid, because of the property valuation changes that, for fullness tax, I mean, we'll go up four-point-two-eight percent. So I talked about the projected designated fund balance this year, come up, we're coming in with eighty-five thousand, two-five-five revenues over expenses. So consequently, gives us, the total of designated fund balance is eight-five-oh-four-four-three-six. This year, we're projecting expenses lower than revenues. And as that moves forward, applying that toward our other post-employment benefits, lowering that to pay for our, basically, our teachers that are retired, that gets us to eight-point-four-two-four-four-two-four, excuse me. So we strive for what the totes have used for years as their guiding principles, being impeccable with our word, don't take anything personally, don't make assumptions about others, always do our best, be skeptical, but learn to listen. You know, I'm telling you this news, yeah, but this, there's a bright side to this. This district has an excellent staff and has excellent administration. I'm fortunate to work for Dr. Pesci and his board. We have teachers, you heard about, you heard about all the school business. So consequently, when I'm talking about this today, I'm saying, it's not a gloom and doom. We're one-point-seven million underneath the revenue cap, we have a low cost per pupil, we have an infrastructure, a safety, an infrastructure that I've seen, I've been in other districts, actually, last week, doors open, things such as that. So we're doing things that are right. We can't control property valuation, but we control what we can do. We have citizen academic achievement responsibility. I don't think we're doing that bad. Guiding our comments. So.
Are there any questions, Carl?
I'm just interested to know if there's any information about the impact that our budget has on building and program budgets. I knew, know from years past that sometimes the building budgets had, if someone's staffed it, or...
You mean the building level of budgets and principals spend?
Yes.
How has that affected, Carl?
I think we allocate per pupil dollar amounts for high school. There's, there's a different tier level for high school rather than elementary, because high school is more expensive. So that has remained somewhat constant. But one of the things we did is because they were absorbing technology within their own budgets, we decided to, see how much money they were spending on technology, and rather than, so we took the technology portion out of their budgets and gave it to the technology infrastructure, basically, to the unit item, to support technology and camp, somewhat have more comprehensive of technology purchases in the district. So they've been reduced out of the technology, but the technology has been absorbed, literally, in a different area. Now, I could say that at the end of last year, the high school and middle school, they all do a great job with their budgets. And actually, they had some, they had a little left over, but I think they would probably argue with me that they always want more. So consequently, they probably could speak for themselves that they're not being served. We really try to serve the, serve the principalship in all our budgets, so I don't know if that's a good answer.
I think what he's saying is it's hard to give you number-to-number comparisons because of the switch around of technology, but in doing that, try to keep the rest of it constant.
Thank you.
Carl, what, what, you, you put down on the state aid, the reduction was basically the same as last year, the number. What, what's your basis for that? I mean, what were the indicators to say that we're going to receive three-hundred, I think it was three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars less this year, the same as last year? It's almost identical.
The Department of Public Instruction, they give the best estimate, they give July first estimate to all the school districts in the state of Wisconsin. And they're relatively accurate, they have a few years that weren't, but that's the estimate they give districts to go with and it's based upon declining enrollment of a multitude of, of mathematical formulas, but that's the data driven from Department of Public Instruction, that's where it comes from.
Okay, and is there anything on the political horizon to make you think that that would change?
No.
No, other years, there has been talk that there's a deal in place, but nothing this year at all. It's just that.
Are there any big-ticket items anticipated in the budget for facility needs?
Pardon?
Any big-ticket items anticipated in the budget on facilities?
The only big ticket was the chiller unit, which is already in flight. That would be it, so it's already within the budget, so no, other than that.
Other than that, what are the additional projections that we have for facility needs? We're still staying pretty much on that.
Yeah, we're staying pretty much on task.
What about buses for next year?
Buses, we have two buses in this year's budget, which is, pretty much, has been a status quo. I did call the earlier and said, "Could we squeeze another, just go with one bus this year?" Then we showed you the data, and the data spoke loud and clear that no. So we continue that rotation.
A lot of comments I'd make, you heard Carl talk over and over again about the underneath revenue cap, spending under the revenue cap. I hope you understand what a big deal that is. We used to say, and you saw here tonight, we're one of the few districts taxing below the revenue cap. So that used to be our comfortable, that was our ceiling. But now, you've got us down here, then you've got the revenue caps. Now you're getting larger and larger number of districts passing referendum to surpass the revenue cap. So that's even a third ceiling that's up there, that's another ceiling above where we're at. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about how many districts have, no longer have the revenue cap as their ceiling, but have a passed referendum to succeed the revenue cap. That's just the new normal now, is how much are you able to tax over the revenue cap?
Realizing we've been at a floating level underneath the revenue cap, right now, we're projecting 1.7 million for this budget. If someone were to ask about doing the math, what is the impact to the property tax individual with regard, what does that 1.7 million equate to roughly, if that's not meant for a question?
It's a good question. $100,000 on the tax levy is so much. Are you guessing?
Rather than guessing, especially with the media here, why don't you? Why don't you get back to me and give a chance?
Could you send that to Hollis?
Will do.
Yes, it's on the prior communication.
Carl, we're having a meeting, as you know, in a couple of weeks to go over this in the public hearing. Is there going to be any change to the data that we're seeing tonight at that time?
Yes, changes will be final certification of general state aid on our third Friday count and final property valuation. Three of the property evaluations changed slightly. Third Friday count, probably remain the same. General state aid is a wild card, which is a big wild card.
In the past, we've seen fluctuations in general state aid from this point to the budget hearing point of less than $100,000 though, isn't it?
Two years, one year there, two years, one year there, a little more. But it's going to change dramatically, it's going to be dramatic.
Last question, then we can move on and connect a copy of this that hasn't been prepared.
All in favor?
I'm going to roll call. I know. Benny Mannion?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Uh, yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steven Johnson?
Yes.
Connie Baldwin?
Yes.
And Kirsten Greiffield?
Yes.
And Stephen Shamball?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, all roll call.
Motion due adjourned.
Wait a minute.
Right.
State of the school address. Try to just open my glasses, you see what happens. Welcome to my annual address to the school board, staff, and community regarding the state affairs in our organization. I will use this opportunity to share my thoughts on the good things happening in our district. In preparation for tonight's presentation, I reviewed my comments from the past few years and found them to be somewhat negative in focusing on federal and state intrusion into our local responsibility to educate our students. While those intrusions continue to make obtaining local goals more difficult, I intend to focus on more positive things in this year's report to the community. Isn't it interesting that long after our students graduate from our schools, they remember and appreciate their experiences more than their performance on state tests? Similarly, while they appreciate the first-rate education they receive from our teachers, they tend to remember those teachers, administrators, and support staff who went beyond their normal duties and helped them grow to be responsible adults. Just think how well we do in those areas not measured by standardized tests. Our graduates will remember their opportunity to be a member of a destination imagination team that earned the right to go to world finals. Our FFA students will forever be proud of their standing as number one in Wisconsin and top 10 in the nation. Our student athletes will remember their opportunities to compete at local sectional, regional, and state competitions. Band and choir students will remember their performances in front of appreciative audiences along with their award-winning performances in New York and Florida. Our art students will remember their trips to art museums. And our forensics and chess students will remember their opportunities to compete against national talent. The list goes on and on throughout our various programs. Our relationship with WAPAC founding and other local businesses gives students opportunities to experience real-world learning with state-of-the-art equipment. Graduates of the school district WAPAC have had the opportunity to perform on a professional-grade stage in a comfortable auditorium on our well-maintained athletic fields in front of large crowds. They've been educated in spacious facilities equipped with the latest technology infrastructure and taught with state-of-the-art devices by teachers who know how to use them. Asian students will leave the school district WAPAC knowing they have a place in society and the confidence to fit in. All of our students have had access to quality nursing, guidance, and social work services carried out by caring staff throughout their educational experience. Our students are delivered safely to and from school every day. They learn in a clean and safe environment and are served healthy foods for breakfast and lunch. Our students benefit in and out of the classroom from caring teachers, aides, and secretaries. Finally, anticipate lasting benefits through our PBIS program as we teach students and remind our community to be responsible, respectful, safe, and prepared the WAPAC way. Let us not forget or ignore how important these non-tangible and non-testable factors are in the lives of our students. We have a lot to be thankful for in the school district WAPAC, things that do not show up on our state-imposed school report card. This is only hard because these things are so important. Nothing I said takes away from our school's performance on standardized tests. Students who graduate from WAPAC will know and appreciate they were taught by teachers who are named teacher of the year, or who are co-finalists, or earned a master's degree in their teaching field. We deliver those intangibles, and our students perform well on the school district report card, all in a cost-effective manner as prescribed in our district's mission statement. As we educate every child who walks through our doors, I'm convinced our staff and community will continue to make a positive difference in the lives of the more than 2,000 students who entered our schools this fall. Now it is time for me to announce my intent to retire at the end of the current school year. As I conclude my 24th and final year with the school district WAPAC, I thank those I've worked for, those I've worked with, and the community I've served for all you have done for me and my family. It's been an honor to be a part of this wonderful organization we call the school district WAPAC. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
Your presence is going to be very nice.
Did you change your mind?
No, you're not putting me out.
Nope, we have a lot of work to do yet this year, and I understand that. So, thank you.
Would you turn?
Yes. Good, I thought it would be for everybody.
I appreciate your offer.
Rather than everyone stirring that tape, I'd move to adjourn.
Roll call? Aye, aye.
Thank you.